Okay with you, we will make note that Kathy's chairing because you're attending remotely?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I can't see behind that camera.
Why is he in stereo?
Because he's coming from there and from the TV. More to wait for everybody.
Wait, let's call this meeting to order. First item up is the adoption of the agenda. I need a motion to adopt that. Any additions, changes, spelling errors, anything emergent? Seeing nothing, all in favor? Motion carried. Next, accounts payable. This will be for information. I could get somebody to put it on the table. Larry? Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Next is the cash and investment summary. James move for information? Anybody have any questions or concerns? None, all in favor? Next, we have the Northside feasibility study, the project update with the delegation. Invite you to the microphone. Okay, and can I just get you to say your name and position for the record?
I am Jeff Angen. I'm with Stan Tech Consulting, and I was one of the authors on the feasibility study.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so just quickly, quick agenda here with a number of items that we'll be covering as I work through the agenda. I'm hoping to plan for about 10 minutes or so, and then I don't know if there's a question period after, but if there happens to be, then we'll have time after that. Now the clicker's not working. All right, so you can go ahead to the next slide. So at Stan Tech, at our core, we always keep safety in mind, so at the start of these presentations, we just usually do a quick stop and talk about a relevant safety item. I'm not going to read stuff out point by point, but one of the things that was surprising to me this year was, it was pointed out that there is a substantially high increase in crimes during the holiday seasons, people walking into businesses and even businesses like ours. We actually have locks that, we have to lock our laptops down, people will come in and pull stuff off whenever desks are unattended. So there's a number of pointers on here for helping reduce your risk when it comes to theft and crime during the holiday season. Okay, so introduction and background. So the town of Red Cliff has a prospective greenhouse development located in the Northside development area. The town currently has an area structure planned for the Northside development area, but it does not cover the subject lands for the feasibility study. The town currently has a draft functional servicing study, which does cover the subject lands and some of the surrounding areas there. So as part of our role in the project, the town asked us to complete a feasibility study of the specific quarter section of land, which would be developed in two stages. The initial stage would be to service the greenhouse, and the subsequent stage would be to develop the remainder of the industrial lands within that quarter section. Okay, so up here we can see in the ASP, it has highlighted kind of the planned area. So the darker colored orange and purple lands are the lands that are currently covered under the area structure plan for Northside development, and all the grayed out areas are kind of in a shadow plan within that document. So both the ASP and the town's MDP include this entire area in their, within their documents, however, yet it's not directly spoken to within the ASP. Both those documents also do suggest logical sequence of development within the area in order to maximize economical efficiencies with the extension of your utilities. The draft functional servicing report that the town had completed, or partially completed a number of years ago, provides the detailed preliminary engineering information to service all areas within the Northside development, so including the areas outside of the ASP. There were additional studies beyond that as well, like the transportation master plan and water network analysis documents that were also utilized in our feasibility study to help provide the background and information needed to provide proper assessment of these, of this new development lands. So the updated concept for the planned area is shown on the screen. It has blocked out a large area where the greenhouse would sit, and then it shows kind of the remaining industrial lands in purple for that quarter section. There's some land statistics put on the side there, essentially with the quarter section. It is made up of 32 hectares that are planned as part of the greenhouse, which is to be developed in three stages, I believe, with an initial purchase upfront, and then two expansion areas on the east and west side of where the main building would be. This being the lowest part of the lands within the entire Northside area, the largest storm pond was planned to go there. That was the last point of collection before it was discharged through a series of pipes to the north to a coolie draw, which eventually goes to the river. So you have quite a lot of the land in this quarter section taken up by a stormwater management facility. That's about 6.9 hectares. Once you take the road networks out of the quarter section on top of those other two items, you're left with about 13.4 hectares of developable industrial lands. Okay, so a brief highlight or brief review of the study. So site grading, the important part with reviewing the site grading from the functional servicing report was to identify whether or not the grading scheme would still work and would still have a net balance of material to grade the site properly. Because of the large pond there, it's well within the ability to grade within that site without any significant fills or dirt balance issues. So site grading was a relatively positive result with our. Transportation network and neighborhood design, neighborhood impact, sorry. Again, no significant impacts to the overall transportation network were identified. The one important point to note with this was, with this development, an updated TIA would be needed prior to developing these lands, because with the ASP, the original TIA would have only covered those lands that were covered within the ASP, and given the proximity to the number one highway, Alberta Transportation would want to see a TIA as part of your development permitting process. Water network analysis, so within the town's current water network, there has been 16.8 liters a second of flow that has been dedicated to the Northside development area. This is very insufficient to service the area as a whole. That was identified in the water network analysis that was completed a little over a decade ago. There are some recommendations for pipe network improvements that would be required to go above and beyond that. However, for one quarter section of land that we are dealing with here, it would take up about 7.7 liters per second of the available 16.8, leaving 9.1 liters per second for the greenhouse. The greenhouse does require potable water service. They also do plan on using a lot of rainwater captured on site to reduce the amount of water that they need. However, it still will have an impact on the water network throughout. The sanitary network, a new lift station would have to be constructed in the northeast corner of the development. This was previously identified in the previous studies and documents. In order for that lift station to discharge, it has to pump through a force main that is roughly initially going to be about 1.2 kilometers long to discharge down at Van Dam Street. As development occurs in the southeast corner of the Northside area, that force main length will get reduced. So right now, it's basically following the alignment of future sanitary pipes, and as those pipes get installed, the force main would get removed and ultimately connected at a different location. Stormwater management. So the stormwater pond footprint is currently sized to accept flows from the entire Northside area. The footprint will allow for the full 300,000 cubic meters of water that needs to be stored in that according to the stormwater management studies that were previously completed. Current modeling that we completed have shown that we need about 50,000 cubic meters of storage at this time, so it's about six of the total capacity. To reduce the, or remove the need to have a gravity discharge system traveling, I think it was about six kilometers north to a coolie draw and then ultimately to the river, we have accounted or assumed that we would be building out a larger area and the stormwater pond would function as an evaporation and infiltration pond in the initial phase until additional stuff came online and it was more economically feasible to build that full outfall that ultimately is required. So we've taken a fairly conservative approach to the size around that pond, but the land will accommodate for it. Shallow utilities. So I've only got one point on here, but with the gas electric servicing largely for this area coming from the city medicine hub, they do have gas mains in the area that are available to service. However, their power generating capacity on the north side of the city is about to be tapped out, so further development here. And I believe there's already been some discussions with the greenhouse and the city as far as providing power, so I believe that was considered within their, within their initial discussions when they provided us comment. But it will require upgrades to both the power generating station at the north side of the city and the electric substation up there in order to fully service the development. There is the potential, if the town of Red Cliff were interested, to extend high pressure gas from TransCanada through the industrial area, which depending on the types of developments that come through, may assist in the marketing of it. And then shallow utilities, both Telus and Shaw indicated that they have fiber networks available, but they are close to the number one highway. They were not able to confirm if they had enough available capacity within their current fiber lines in the area to service the entire industrial park area. They felt it reasonable that they could service most, if not all, of the subject lands. So there would be some off-site costs with the telecommunications companies to extend those services to the site. All right, so we provided a bit of a summary on developing costs here. So to service the greenhouse lands, the servicing costs to extend services and do the site grading and do some of the roadwork necessary to get that development up and running, the estimate came in just a little bit under $4.7 million. So what that works out to is about $59,000 per acre to service the greenhouse lands. The remaining industrial lands, being 13.9 hectares or 34 acres, the cost to service the remaining portions of those lands is about $26 million, and that works out to about $600,000, $625,000 per acre. So if you averaged all the developable lands, the greenhouse and the industrial lands, you summarize them together, your servicing cost per acre would work out to about $231,000 per acre. So to summarize that up, we just finished talking about the construction cost. We did carry 30% contingency at this high level with a detailed design in there. That is pretty standard for coming up with cost estimates at this point in time. Ideally, what you would see as the design is refined and you're working towards that, your actual construction costs will get higher and your contingency costs will get lower and fall somewhere kind of in the middle of that 0-30% range there. The servicing costs did not include additional cost for wetland reclamation. It did not account for land value costs. It did not account for off-site levy fees or any other permitting fees, subdivision costs that would be required to move forward with the development. Regionally, fully serviced industrial lands are currently selling for $200,000, $450,000 an acre. I know Leftbridge in their new industrial park is currently listing land at $195,000 per acre. It is quite a big range, but with that range, typically when you see smaller lots, they generate higher per acre sales amounts, because the servicing costs within that footprint are higher. You need more roads, you need more pipes with the smaller lots. With the bigger lots, because obviously the town wouldn't have any infrastructure within those lots, the costs usually end up a little bit lower down in that $200,000. So through the process, what we've identified is that the servicing costs are extremely high for land. A large reason why those costs are a lot higher than you typically see is because of the leapfrog nature of the servicing. All of these utilities come with off-site extensions of your water, your sanitary, your communications, your road network, about a little bit longer, just to get you up to the site, and then you have to develop within them. So typically, in other developments, there would be a levy fund that would have been set up to do the off-site utility extensions to get you up to your quarter sectional land, which, you know, I don't believe any of these have been included as off-site of the project or towns have borne any off-site levy planning. So that essentially is the summary from this. I would defer, I guess, to administration on the costs and, you know, the next steps for this. But the servicing cost for the land is extremely high relative to the type of development that is proposed in here. That's it for me.
Does anybody have any questions for Jeff? Okay, I need a motion to accept the study for information. Matt? All in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the meeting minutes from November 22nd, 2020, 2021. So need a motion for Larry for adoption. Anybody have any corrections, concerns, errors, omissions? None? Okay, all in favor? Motion's carried. Next is the meeting of special council meeting minutes for the capital budget, November 24 and 25, 2021. Need a motion for adoption. And Chris? Anybody have any questions, concerns? All in favor? Next is the minutes from the special council meeting for the operating budget, which was November 27, 2021. Motion for adoption. And James? Anybody have any questions or concerns? All in favor? Motion's carried. Next, we have for information, the minutes from the town of Red Cliff library board meeting, October 19, 2021. Jim? Anybody have any questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carried. Next is the minutes from the landfill meeting, November 30th. Larry for information? Anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Then the town of Red Cliff emergency management meeting of November 30th, 2021. Larry for information? Anybody have any questions or concerns? None, all in favor? Motion's carried. Next, we have the minutes for the review golf club board meeting of November 10th. Chris for information? Anybody have any questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion's carried. Next, under bylaws, we have a request for decision, bylaw 1932/2021, the water rates bylaw. This will be for first, second, and third readings? I give one motion? No, it has to be all separate.
The third one has to be unanimous.
Okay. James has put it on the table for first reading. Anybody have any questions or concerns? All in favor? Motion's carried. I need a motion for second reading from Matt. Anybody have any questions or concerns? All in favor? Motion's carried. I need a motion to put it on the table for third reading, and this motion must be unanimous. Came from James, uh, James, Jim?
Close.
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 Anybody have any questions or concerns? All in favor? Motion is carried unanimous. And I need a motion for third reading. Chris? Any further questions or concerns? And all in favor? Motion's carried. Next, we have bylaw 1933/2021, which is a sewer rate bylaw. Again, it'll be three readings. James puts it down on the table for first reading. Anybody have any questions or concerns? All in favor? Need a motion for second reading. Larry? Anybody have any questions or concerns? All in favor? Motion's carried. Now I need a motion to put this on the table for third reading, and this must be unanimous. From Matt? All in favor for third reading? Motion's carried, unanimous. And now I need a motion for final third reading from Jim? Any questions or concerns from anyone? All in favor? Motion is carried. Feel like an auctioneer. Next is bylaw 1934/2021, the garbage rates and collection bylaw. Larry for first reading. Anybody have any questions or concerns? All in favor? Motion's carried. Need a motion for second reading, James? Any more questions or concerns? All in favor? Motion's carried. Need a motion to put it on the table for third, final. And Chris? Questions or concerns? This must be unanimous. All in favor? Motion's carried. I need a motion to put it on the table for third reading. And Matt? Any questions or concerns? Or forever hold your peace? All in favor? And that motion is carried. Next, we have bylaw 1935/2021, the fees, rates, and charges bylaw. A motion for first reading, Larry? Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I do.
Yes, White.
Okay, I guess my concern would be, in light of our capital budget meetings and some of the thoughts we had with the arena in the next couple of years, I really don't think we should be leaving those rates alone. Like, the arena already loses significant money, and to be putting another $2 million into it without any changes in rates, I don't think is good planning. Like, that just puts everybody else in town on the hook for that. And I know our rates are definitely less than the cities. There might be some better rates in Irvin, but I think we have to look at our rental rates for the arena and try to bring in a little bit more money. Like, it'll never be self-sufficient, but we're definitely not helping by keeping them And I know that this came forward, the rec board looked at it and recommended no changes in rates, but the rec board doesn't get to deal with the tax bill in June.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, it was definitely mentioned in budget time. Two million roughly next year?
Well, that's if we're going to go ahead with it, right? And it's, I believe, I think the city is over $100 an hour for minor hockey, are they not? Does anybody there know the rates for the city?
I could ask the Cubs, because I'm affiliated with them, see what they...
Well, they might, they might even get charged more than the actual youth, right? Because they're a special team almost?
Yeah.
No, I'm pretty sure we're less than them, and, yeah. I guess, would there be, I think, because this has to be put out just for feelers, I don't know if this is important, that all these rates get passed. Worst case scenario is if some of these, we're not changing the rates on minor hockey till at least next September. Even if we change these now, their rates would stay in place up to March. So I don't know if there's harm or foul in not passing this tonight without doing some research. And like I say, it's all, it's up to you guys, too. Like, just because I think that we should maybe look at them, if you don't think that, then it can all be passed tonight, too, so. But I was looking at any of the other things, you know, there's not really a whole bunch there, but I just know that there's big projects coming up at the arena.
So where does Red Cliff Minor Hockey fall in this table? They're a nonprofit youth organization that pay $90 an hour right now, correct?
They're the $90 an hour. And the 75 an hour.
Can't we raise the rates next year?
Well, if we did, Larry, we'd have to raise them now, because they're, they're right now currently working on these rates up till March. We would be changing them to become into effect next September, right? Next hockey season. We're not going to change their rates on the mid-season.
Right. And I feel that the improvements to the arena are three years out, don't you? the improvements to the arena are three years out, don't you?
We defer to the next year.
Well, that's what I mean, so it's, it's three years out, so I, I don't know, at least three years out, so I don't know why we'd, you know, um, I feel okay with the rates that they, that, the way they are, but.
The thing with that, though, is if you push it off too long, and then you have to take such a big jump, you're better off taking a little jump at a time and, instead of
Yeah.
almost doubling the rate later on, type of thing.
That's exactly what I was just gonna say. A gradual approach to the increases.
Yeah.
More applicable.
Should we send this back to administration to, uh, do a little bit of research on these prices?
And compare what Madison Hat Arena is, so.
And compare what our neighbors are charging?
Madison Hat Minor Hockey is paying one thirty-four an hour right now.
Okay, about forty percent less. Sorry, that's forty percent more, fifty percent more than what we're charging.
So that's equivalent to our nonprofit youth, right? What they're paying.
Yeah, that's around ninety dollars an hour.
I missed that, sorry.
Sorry, uh, Madison Hat Minor Hockey, according to their website, is paying one thirty-four an hour for ice time right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Phyllis?
Um, we, as the administration, we know a problem really holding this off for, for another month, other than a couple of date issues. But it could be held until January for second reading, and we could do some further research for council.
You talking about for the whole season rates bylaw, or just this portion?
Just this portion.
You could, I'm gonna defer to Shannon, but can they pass all of the bylaws except for the arena?
Uh, you could put it forward, approving it as it's, as it's presented, we could bring back an amendment at a later date. Or you can hold off until the January meeting, and we could provide you with some additional information.
Through the chair.
Uh, the date issues I'm referring to, I think, are under Meals on Wheels. Where it actually gives a, a date, an effective date of January first, twenty-eighteen to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, which was one of the changes that we were going to strike that out. Mike, I think we're good with the business rate, the business license rates, with holding off. But we would just hold the same rate for Meals on Wheels, we wouldn't change it.
Uh, what works better for administration's functionality than if we pass it all and did amendment later on?
I think that would be what, where are we disagreeing? I think an amendment would work best for us, because it would get all the other changes in that we would like now.
I'm good either way.
Okay, so do we have to get Larry to amend his, his motion to, with the first reading?
Stop at a first reading and, or carry on, and then we will bring it back for amendment later.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll just pass it for first reading?
We'll pass it, yeah. I think consensus is we'll pass it for, we'll continue with first reading, and then send it to.
No, ma'am, we are asking you to give all three readings, and then once we get the data, we, because we do have time with minor hockey, till March, we can do a good job of doing the research and collecting the information and providing that to council for an amendment to that portion.
At a later date.
At a later date.
I'm okay with that.
Sounds good.
What say you? Hey, what do you think, Dwight?
Oh, I think we should just vote. It's, no, no, I, I don't care how the process goes, I just do know that we are, we are less, and, and we are looking for money, and I don't think all of that money is gonna come from grants, so. But I, I, if, if admin wants this, if admin needs this passed right away, then I'd say we pass it. I, I just, like I say, I just brought it up because it, it's nice to not change any rates, but you have to justify them, too. And keeping them too low isn't good justification.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor for first reading? Any further comments or discussion? All in favor? Motion's carried. Now I need for second reading. Get a motion? Chris? For second reading? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Motion carried. Okay, now.
I don't get the vote in opposition.
Hmm?
I don't get the vote in opposition.
Jim wants to say no.
Well, if you, if you say no to putting it on the table for third reading, we're dead in the water. Which is gonna mess up admin, really. Phyllis would be most unhappy.
I'll put it on first.
Okay, so Larry's putting it on the table for
Consensus or?
For, uh, put on the table for third reading? All in favor?
Okay.
Okay, that motion carried unanimous? Now I need a motion for third reading? Need a motion for third reading from James? Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Everybody but Jim and Dwight. Motion did carry, I think.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, next is the bylaw nineteen thirty-six slash twenty-twenty-one, Emergency Management Bylaw. For first reading? I get a motion to put it on the table. From Matt? Anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carried. I need a motion for second reading? And Chris? Anybody questions, concerns? Errors, omissions? None? All in favor? Motion carried. Need a motion for third and final reading from Jim? This needs to be unanimous to be carried forward for third reading? All in favor? Motion carried. I need a motion to put it on the table for third and final reading. James? Any final questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? That one carried. Now we have some requests for decisions. First item is FCSS Special Projects and Operational Grant Funding Allocation for twenty-twenty-one. Get somebody to put a motion on the table so we can discuss it. James, which motion?
Uh, option one to approve.
Okay, motion one's on the table. Anybody have any? Okay, Dwight?
I guess, on, on the rethink, when, uh, the, it got reduced from seven thousand to three thousand, so they qualify for something, but not all that they asked for, like, what happened there?
Shannon?
Are you referring to the JSA?
Yes.
Initially, they, we, uh, the board did not think that they qualified, or that they were in alignment with the funding principles. After Carla looked at it again, she, um, found that it was, and then wanted to include them in the disbursements.
Oh, okay, then I, I read this wrong, because it looked like originally they applied the, for seven, and the FCSS agreed to that, right? And then it got reduced, but maybe I was wrong.
The seniors was reduced because of the rental fee?
Well, the seniors got reduced because the seniors rented the hall for free, it said, so that's very understandable, yeah?
Correct.
Right, okay. Okay. No, if, if that all went, if that's what they were asking for, then that's okay. I just maybe read it wrong.
They originally asked for the three thousand four hundred and eighty-five, and that was in their recommendation.
Yeah, okay. Yep, all right, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions, concerns? All in favor of option number one? Opposed? Motion's carried.
And I guess one other thing, be, uh, because the youth center was asking us for more money, and now they're getting this, plus later on in the budget, we gave them some more as well? Like, are we, um, compounding, I guess, on the amount of money that we're going to be giving the youth center? Because this is almost like free money from leftover, right?
Uh, these, these funds are, I guess, excess due to, um, certain special events and programs not able to run due to COVID.
Exactly, right. I, I understand where this money came from, but I also know that we, we talked about in our budget preparation, the youth center, because they, of course, had asked for more, and, and you had put in a number, and, and we had made that number smaller. Now we're giving them this. Later on, I think coming up soon is the budget. I'm just saying, like, do we just keep going, or should, do you want me to wait and bring this conversation up later?
Is it budget-related matter, or is it related to this dispersment of the FCSS funds?
This, this motion has already been passed.
It can be either or, but this one's already voted on, so this one's done, so I'll save it for budget.
This one's done, so save it for the budget.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item up, item B, is the Red Cliff Community Garden, the request to waive their water fees. I need a motion to put this on the table? Okay, Larry? Which, which, uh?
Option one.
Option one? And just for the new counselors, this is something we do every year.
Yeah, I agree.
So does anybody have any questions or concerns?
How many plots are there getting in this?
I don't know, most people the size of a tennis court, it's getting quite big.
I'd say about a dozen.
About a dozen?
Yeah.
And it's, how many is Madison Hat, again?
I'm sorry, I don't have that data on me.
You really got a problem with that, eh? Good half, yeah. Is it a neighborly thing to do to say that we waived it for Red Cliff residents that you did? It's not a neighborly thing to do?
No, because it's, uh, it's not metered per, per plot.
Oh, right.
It's just a whole thing or nothing?
It'd be, we could charge a fee for a plot, then. Okay, Larry?
We could charge a fee for, for, for non-residents.
Yeah.
For rental of the plot, yeah.
Doesn't bother that the administration has probably didn't work for two hundred and thirty dollars a year? Okay?
No.
Okay, very good.
Okay, any other further questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item is the Request for Decision for the twenty-twenty-two interim operating budget. Need a motion to put it on the table for discussion. Okay, got James, option number one. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
Thanks, Dwight.
Yeah. I said that really tongue-in-cheek.
Well, like, in, in lieu of the previous motion, I would like to just put forward that we do not increase the annual funding to the youth center. For this year.
Is that under section seventy-four oh eight?
I don't know where it is, James. I just know that, uh, we did up their stand, like, I believe we've always given them a set amount, and we did raise it.
I was just trying to see how much it was.
I think we did, did we do six, Shannon? You had, didn't you, you were putting in? No. Thirteen. You'd put in an extra twenty-five, and we lowered it, or something like that. It was the other, it was the other one that, there was a couple of them that we altered the amount that we were actually going to go with. One of them was, uh, yeah. No, I'm pretty sure we, I can't remember if it was thirteen or fifteen that we changed the youth on.
I'm just trying to find the number here.
Come on, Mike, think quick.
And, and the worst part is, this is FCSS money, it, it only costs us twenty percent, but still, if, if this money could be used somewhere else, then that's still a good thing to use somewhere else.
Well, that's just the issue, Dwight. We only had so many submissions come forward that qualified for the funding, and
I know, but
We gave up what we could.
But on the other hand, this is also, at one time, our staff had enough programs running, and, and, and the reason why there was such a big surplus was because there was programs not run through COVID. But, like I say, we deliberated with changing the funding. If they're already gonna be getting twenty thousand, then, then they're, I just say that the need for next year to give them that extra isn't really there, they just got it in the one lump sum thing.
So, this is on page forty-nine of seventy-six, everyone, it's fifty-one oh seven. Last year, we budgeted eighteen thousand, and then twenty-twenty-two's budget was twenty-one thousand, so it went up about three thousand dollars.
That's it? We're only getting three thousand one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it went from twelve to fifteen.
Okay, that's where my numbers are, okay? Because they were asking for, I think Shannon had originally put in a lot more, right?
Yes, sir, they had.
And we took that number down.
Yeah, they had asked for a lot, a lot more, and we said, no.
Right, yeah. But now we're giving them a lump? So is it important that they, that we give them the three extra, too? Like, because every year, there is money left over, and I believe just about any time there has been money left over, they've also been a beneficiary of that. So they get extra funding, even if it isn't in our budget line.
Shannon?
Again, that's
Can you remember, I know that the youth center, they're restricted, that they can only spend certain funds on certain things. Is there any difference between the funds that we give them under the budget, what that can be used for, as opposed to what the funding we give them through FCSS can be used for?
I think, if you want, I think that the funding that comes directly from the town of Red Cliff can be used for operational. I believe all FCSS funding can only be used for program.
I believe you're right.
If, if my memory's right, I think.
Through the chair. I believe there's even been times where we haven't used this money. That it's just been left with, uh, the government people and
And then they claw it back.
No. I, I believe that Larry, anytime there's been money left over, there's always been, just like we just did two motions ago, we reallocated the funds.
Yeah. I don't think it was ever not allocated.
Well, I'll be honest, we wanted to give more money to the library, but that's all they asked for. Go ahead, James.
So, in the previous motion that we passed, under Red Cliff Action Society for Youth, it says operational grants. Does that not mean operational funds?
I'm just going by my memory, but maybe because of where it is, but I, I believe most FCSS funding is, FCSS funding is for programs.
I'm pretty sure it is, like, the the programming, not the operational costs.
But if, if it's written that this is for operations, then
It says operation, twenty thousand dollar operational grants.
Well, I believe that we have to word it properly, too, because the money that we give away through FCSS is, is, we have guidelines as to what qualifies and what doesn't. So if the town is giving somebody money, it has to meet the qualifications of FCSS, and that's what Carla and Shannon have to work with. So, and the, the youth have been getting money So, and the, the youth have been getting money from FCSS for fifteen years or longer, that, since the day they started. So they must qualify. I don't know how far the trail goes once we give them money, if they were a worthy cause. I don't know if they have to account back. Matter of fact, I don't think it is, because very rarely do people account for the money that FCSS gives them as an audit trail back to us, because we've even asked some groups sometimes for how the money was spent. Right? And we don't do that of, of the youth center, I'm sure the youth center doesn't have to give us, they have to show us our budget, their budget and their financials, but I don't think they have to prove that they spent our money a certain way. I could be wrong, but I, we do have to see their financial statements, but I don't know if, if, uh, we have to follow exactly where the FCSS money went. Because we, I think it is, we're giving it to the youth center and they must obviously be an approved use of FCSS money, because they're a program unto themselves.
Well, either we amend the budget, taking that extra three thousand dollars out and stick it in reserves, or we we vote on it. The way I look at it, three thousand dollars is not that big an amount of money. And next year, we can give them nothing.
It's not a big amount at all.
So James, do you want to amend your motion or do you want us to proceed on it? I think I'm going to call the question.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll call the question. Okay, all in favor? Three in favor? Opposed? Or opposed? Motion is defeated. So I need, uh, a new motion. Somebody want to craft one?
Well, I would, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the interim budget in principle with the youth center move back to their previous funding amount of, I guess, twelve thousand is what Mike was saying.
And where
Because that's the only thing that has changed since we, the Saturday we spent with budgets.
And that extra three thousand dollars, do we just allocate that to reserves?
No, that, this, that can just stay in FCSS. I'm hoping that there's some FCSS money that isn't allocated in case something important comes up through the year. Or we even find a worthy project that's new. I'm sure we don't give away every penny every day, that's why we just gave away thirty thousand dollars. So, it can just sit there, but as far, all that would mean is they would get twelve thousand dollars from us from the budget.
And the other three thousand would stay there, but the budget numbers would stay the same?
Yes, the twelve thousand would, the fifteen would just move back to the standard twelve that they've been getting forever. Well, actually, I, I could be wrong, it might have been nine in its inception years and then it moved up to twelve. But it's been twelve for quite a few years, I believe.
So, uh, just a question for Mike. So if we approve this in principle, are you going to have to bring it back to us for final decision?
It'll come back for final approval in April anyway.
Okay.
Uh, so the way I'm taking Dwight's, uh, motion is that that line item for two fifty-one oh seven, 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 zero, 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 the town contributions to other organizations, that number is going to stay the same, but the youth center is only going to be twelve, so there's still going to be the three thousand dollars in there, but we're just taking the youth center down because we still have to spend that money. So that three thousand will still be included in the budget, just not allocated to the youth center, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll just be in the pool.
Okay.
And if it doesn't get spent at the end of the year, we'll be allocating that pool again.
Right, so at the end of the day, you're, the budget that you're approving, the numbers that you're seeing won't be changing, it's just the allocation in that account. Only twelve thousand will go to the youth center, not fifteen.
Okay.
Correct.
Chris?
Why would we even keep it in pool? Why not just take it out totally? Because that would be a tax hit, would it not?
No, not, only twenty percent of FCSS money is a mill rate hit.
Yeah.
We get a certain amount from the province that we have to match.
Yeah, I forgot about the twenty percent rule there, so that answers my question.
Yeah.
Through the chair.
All right, Larry?
Does that affect our grants and we're going to have to find something, like Dwight's pretty sure that there's going to be something? But are we, are we going to lose this money? Is it allocated for something that we have to use right now?
No, sir.
No, okay.
I, I don't believe we've ever lost FCSS money, Larry. At the end of the year, if, it looks like they've always made recommendations of people that we can give it away to.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Any further questions or comments? None, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item is the twenty twenty-two capital budget request for decision. I could get a motion to put it on the table. And Chris? And which option are you going with?
Oh, option number one.
Option number one. Anybody have any questions or concerns about the capital budget? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have for information, correspondence. Royal Canadian Legion Branches Six. Correspondence from the Legion regarding flag poles, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
For information.
Motion from Larry for information, any questions, concerns? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next is from the City of Gold Lake, the College of Physicians and Surgeons, correspondence. Motion for information from Jim. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Alberta Recreation and Parks Association, congratulations and introduction. James moved for information. Anybody got any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have for information. City of Camrose, Mayor and Council, seasons greetings. Oh, boy. I give motion to receive for information, Larry?
Just glad every town didn't send us one.
There was a time they used to, we used to walls covered with them. Then everybody wanted electronic. Uh, any questions besides it's a pretty card? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Next. I'm carefully going to try to pronounce this under other for information. Biophysical assessment and wetland regulatory permitting for Southwest twenty-one of thirteen, six west of the fourth. And I said that without tripping too badly. Need a motion for information? Anybody? James? I was looking right at him, I didn't see anything. Anybody have any, uh, questions about this? Questions, concerns? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item, recycling collection services, it's a memo to council regarding the collection services. Motion for Matt. Anybody have any questions regarding this? James?
So this annual cost of twenty thousand dollars-ish, where does that fit into our budget or does that get added on to the garbage collection bill every month?
We started collecting that in January, sir.
Of this year?
Of twenty twenty-one, yes.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor of accepting for information? Opposed? All in, uh, motion carried. Next item, project updates, project timeline from twenty twenty-one for information. Okay, from James. Anybody have any questions for administration on this? Nothing? Good. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Next list is the twenty twenty-two projects, and this will be for information from Larry. Anybody have any questions for council on this one?
I do.
Go ahead.
So I see in your, your camp chart here, the River Valley washroom is still on there, but I thought I saw somewhere else in the package saying that was put back for re-sculping?
That was, yeah, but it's still, I'm beginning.
Okay.
Yeah, but there are re-sculping to do within
In within the budget a lot? Oh.
Any other questions for administration? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Next is the municipal manager report to council for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Motion to accept for information. Jim? Anybody have any questions for Phyllis or other members of administration on this?
I have one.
Yes, Dwight?
So, um, it's funny, we just approved our garbage bylaw and I noticed in here that Barry, it's hunting season, so Barry deals with calls about people throwing their carcasses in, in our garbage bins. And it says in our bylaw that that's a prohibited waste. Is there any fine for that or it's just one of those things that happens and it doesn't matter that it's prohibited or not?
Should be something under the garbage bylaw, but I don't
No, there's nothing in the garbage bylaw about fines. So, is it, and I, I didn't really see it in rates and fees, but it says it's a prohibited waste. And you shouldn't do it.
Correct.
And then like you said, well Barry's got, what did he have, three or something? I can't remember. Noted a couple of times that.
And sometimes it's a matter of, um, confirming or proving who has actually put it in there.
Right, so in other words, we've prohibited something that we can't do a darn thing about.
Unless
We sound like the problem. Like, I, I can understand why we wouldn't really want it, right? But, yeah, if, if nobody saw the person doing it, you, you can't blame it on one of the four around the bin because somebody could have driven down the alley. It, it does get dicey, but there's, I don't, I didn't see anywhere that even if he found out who did it, there was any real repercussion.
Go ahead, Larry.
I wonder what you're supposed to do with it, is that, uh, I've seen a whole deer that's gotten hit on the, uh, on the road that's been thrown in the dumpster likely by the bylaw officer. Uh, so what do you do with these carcasses and everything? I'm not, I'm not sure what you're getting at here.
They're just
Well, I think if you can, personally, I guess, if you can load up your truck and go run it around the prairie and shoot a critter and drag it home, you should be able to put the carcass in your same truck and take it to the landfill, if it's prohibited to put in a bin. I, I don't even see where that's a difficult thing, but obviously it is.
So are you suggesting that we create a fine for that?
Well, I would not suggest that myself, that would be like any other fine out there. We have fines for all kinds of things. But if you look in our budget and you look at revenue, it's a zero, so tells me that we don't do a lot of fines. Just saying.
Well, maybe we'll leave that with administration for the next time they're reviewing the garbage bylaw. There might be something under the rules and regulations with Alberta environment, but I can't recall off the top of my head. So we have a motion on the table to receive the manager report for information. All in favor? Motion carried. Next is the landfill graphs, twenty twenty-one versus the five-year average. Get a motion for information. Okay, Chris? Anybody have any questions or concerns about the landfill graphs? It looks like the landfill's had a decent year. Anybody have any questions or concerns about the landfill graphs? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. And then finally we have council importing important meetings and events. It's getting hard to spit stuff out. Uh, need a motion to accept this for information from Jim. Anybody have any questions besides the holidays are coming? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. And then we'll call a brief recess. And then we'll come back to closed. Five, five, ten minutes?